Well, folks, as promised, we have a very special guest today. If you've been following Facebook and the adept marketing strategies for certain individual, you will have seen his name. I have my hats off. It's been in rotation. It's been... Your campaign seems to be running effectively.
Thank you.
Glad to see that. Also, it was nice to meet the candidate forum.
Yeah.
A bit too brief.
Very too brief, yeah.
Not much oxygen for subject matter in the room.
I was kind of... I think we were all kind of in shock when they said, okay, you got thirty seconds. So, three minutes suddenly turned into thirty seconds to give our entry and our exit.
It was like speed dating. Well, I'm a nice guy. Oh, next. It felt like that. And I think some candidates who are kind of built for that from their background thrive in that. Like, I've got a big mouth. You give me fifteen seconds and I'll own the stage. I think a lot of folks that aren't used to sort of navigating in those waters. It's... I won't call it a disservice, and I know they're trying to accomplish a lot. But hopefully, what you and I can do today is we can delve into some more substance and not throw each other under the bus and inform folks out in the community out there sort of what the conversations are. Now, I haven't done a lot of research on you, other than our interactions have always been pleasant, civil. You go to Orange Baptist Church, am I correct?
That was one of the churches I grew up at.
Oh, you grew up in Orange. So, that's Orange Baptist Church by the old Bank of America, correct?
Correct.
Right. We sometimes have historical society meetings in that basement, I think, while they're renovating. And... But I see that you've been involved in the community for a while. So, if you went to that church, were you born in Orange or where you come originally, if I may ask?
Sure. I was actually born in Texas.
Texas? Really? Well, you know, Virginia built Texas, right?
Yes, sir, it did. But, yeah, I was born in Texas and I moved here. My parents moved here in nineteen eighty-one when I was two.
Wow. You're a Virginia guy.
Pretty much. I don't remember anything about Texas at all.
But, you know what? You can go back to Texas and claim Texas. That's the whole thing. You might be from... You might be in Texas, but you ain't from Texas. My wife and I have been to Texas a few times. We love it. We drove all the way up to San Angelo from Austin and drove between the hill country and the desert. And my wife's born and raised in Virginia. She's in Nicholson. Goes way back. Her family goes way back to Nicholson Hollow up in Syria, in that neck of the woods.
Oh, wow, okay.
Appalachian. And all the men in that family are big, strapping, you know, wouldn't want to trespass back in seventeen eighty-two, I can assure you.
Yes, sir.
Big boys, big boys. Now, your name, Marky, I guess, where does that come from?
I'm honestly not sure. I know...
Because I know we're history buffs.
Yes. Yeah, we... Yes, yes, we are. So, the name Marky, I've tried to trace it back, and I've only gotten to my great-great-grandfather on that side. I know a lot more about my mother's side. And my mother's side originated here in Virginia. In fact, one of my ancestors was John Washington. It was the great-grandfather of George Washington.
Wow!
Yeah, yeah. And... But they kind of... They settled around in the Culpeper area. They stayed around there for a little while.
Excuse me. Culpeper.
Culpeper.
Culpeper, yes.
You're right, you're right.
Got to get that right if you're going to come from Texas back here. Look at here now. I'm going out to Culpeper. I always tease about that because of the accent in Culpeper. But this is interesting. So, back to Culpeper, which, when you look at that divide between Culpeper and Orange County, there's a lot of who was who, who had power, who didn't. You find a lot of folks that... There's a story about Watts, the Watts of Culpeper County. I started doing real heavy digging, and just down the road, there was a Richard Watts who had one of the first land grants seventeen twenty in Orange.
Yep, yep.
And so, this whole Culpeper, of course, Culpeper was Orange, as everything knows.
As everything was Orange.
Yeah, everything was Orange. Although, the argument between the dividing line of the Rappahannock versus the Rapidan and Lord Fairfax and his folks were saying, oh, no, no, the great branch of the Rappahannock is ours. You know much about that sort of back and forth?
A lot hasn't changed in the past however many hundreds of years.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We're still throwing dirt clods at each other across the Rapidan. But anyway, I digress, as you'll expect. I like to babble, and I appreciate your patience with that.
Sure.
So, you came from Texas at two, two Orange.
Two Orange, yes.
Town of Orange or Orange County?
Yes, sir. Town of Orange, the big blue house there on the corner of Southern East Main. That's where my parents moved to. That's the house I grew up in.
Wow.
They lived in that house until probably about a few years ago. I want to say two thousand eighteen. I forget exactly. But a few years ago, they had to move out because they just couldn't take care of that big house, as is usually the case. So, they moved up north to Delaware with my brother and his family.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, so...
So, they're with family, which is nice, but you're still here in Orange.
I'm still here in Orange.
You're stuck. In fact, you're so stuck, you're actually going to get into the political fabric of Orange. You're going to double down on that.
I'm so... Yeah, I'm so angry, you know. It's like, you know what? Let's do it.
Well, you know, it's... So, sort of delving into that, there's been a lot of, over the course of maybe the last two presidential cycles, three, of everyone's kind of like, yeah, you know, maybe I get riled up and vote for a president or vote for a senator or what have you. But there's this refocus on politics local.
Yeah.
I have a friend, a congressman, that said, "Son..." He doesn't call me "son." I'm going to sort of embellish here. Look at here now, son. Look at here now. Culpeper, yeah, the Senator of Culpeper. No, probably was at one time. But that politics are turning local. You have a lot of people leaving rural, a lot of people living in the city. You have a lot of people coming out. Prices, I think even COVID kind of had some people coming out. The appeal, and this is a natural back and forth. Go to the city, come back from the city. You see an intergenerational sort of go back and forth. But the landscape in rural Orange is... Seems it's always evolving. And so, you've always got this mixed bag of who wants things to go where, who wants what. We do see some division in the county, kind of the, well, we don't want to do it that way, and, well, we need to change, and, you know, without sort of digging into that too deep. But one of the things that comes up is the importance of school board elections.
Absolutely.
This is where you have the influence over your children.
Yeah.
This is how you navigate, you know, what your children are taught, the arc of your children's development. And I was speaking to a very close friend, arguably in Virginia. The mandate is, if you have some kids with... The school system is responsible for including kids with special needs on spectrum and different things from two to twenty-two. That's the understanding, which is a surprise to a lot of people. What, two years old? So, you're... As we look closer to early intervention with kids that need help, special adjustments, I've heard from a number of people that they would like to see the school system maybe being a little bit more sort of Johnny-on-the-spot with some of these early interventions. We have a lot of parents that are homeschooling and then sort of coming back into the fold and then going back, sort of kind of co-teaching, if you will, with a lot of... We do have a pretty good homeschooling base in the community.
We sure do.
And I have heard conversations about where maybe these homeschoolers can then also reach back to the school, maybe come into a VOTEC application. I know Culpeper can do that. I know someone who actually sent one of their kids to the cosmetology class in Culpeper because they had a faster turnaround, a little less sort of bouncing around. Anyway, I don't want to blab too much. I'd like to sort of... But set the stage. There are some, you know, some eyes on where is the school system going? Where has it been? What are our strengths? What are our weaknesses? Just sort of at setting it at that... Setting the stage at that point, what are some of the thoughts that come to mind for you?
Well, I can tell you that when I decided to run for school board, it wasn't... I don't want to say it wasn't planned, but I didn't go into twenty twenty-three saying, yes, I'm going to definitely run for a political office this year. You know, this was not on my mind. Just to get on a little bit of more personal note, some things that happened to me happened over the past few years that I have seen, that I have experienced as a parent, and that I've seen my kid go through, and I've seen other kids go through. And it kind of culminated up to a fact, up to a point where I just said, you know, I've kind of had enough, and I've decided that I want to do something about it. I want to try to help out. I want to try to help make things a little bit better. I heard that the current school board guy, who's a terrific gentleman, Mike Jones, I think, he's a great guy, he decided not to run again. And when I decided to run, and I just want to make this clear, I was having some discussions with Steve Keeler about this earlier through messages.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. I have nothing against anyone who I'm running against. I did not go into this race thinking, that guy's running, well, I'm going to run against him.
I'm going to teach him a lesson.
I'm going to...
One of these days, Val, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, no. Nothing like that. I didn't even know who was running when I ultimately decided to make...
This is your own journey.
This is. It really is. And I... It was just, I'm running based on principle. And with the other guys running, Jack Rickett and Steve Keeler, I've got nothing but good things to say about them. I have nothing but respect for them. You know, I want this to be a very respectful election. I want it to be different than the other elections that I've seen.
It's tough, you know. There's...
It is tough.
There's... This is sort of paradox, and I mentioned it earlier. You definitely have a lot of sort of progressive thoughts, and then you have a lot of traditional orientation. And sometimes things get hot under the collar, and people tend to believe passionately what they believe in. And I say that there's nothing like kissing and making up. So, after we get through all this back and forth.
Sure.
I think it... And I hear this a lot, you know, decorum.
Absolutely.
And the decorum of the office is important. But I would sort of pose to you the idea that part of what has been... And let me preempt this with a statement. I worked at Faulkner County School Systems. I was brought in there to help create an electronics department. I was hired by a guy who was former active-duty Marine. I reached out to them and says, hey, I'd like to help you guys if you ever need some help with sound system and intercom. And because I've always been a sound system buff, I took electronics in school, back to the VOTEC. So, I had a lot of training from... I went to Stonewall Jackson in, which is now U.R. High, a high school or something. Anyway, they renamed it. That's a jab.
I don't think they're going to rename Orange Elementary School or Tech School.
U.R. High Elementary School, yeah. Well, we, you know, and back to that sort of that social push and pull, you know. It's troubling because when you get into these polarizing issues, it's sometimes you got to wonder, wait a minute, we losing sight of the kids?
Absolutely.
And it's like parents, the best way to ruin a soccer game is to get the parents involved in the refereeing.
Yeah.
And I wonder, and this is why I hadn't spoken publicly, interviewed anyone else. I get the sense that you approach this more, which you just spoke, with the sober perspective of a referee who's seen it and wants to help.
Absolutely.
And what's some of your ideas moving forward?
So, one of the big things that I'm pushing for, and one of the biggest things on my platform, is to decrease, if not eliminate, the local standardized teaching that our teachers are having to face on the local level. We can't do anything on the state level. But on the local level, it's gotten to a point now... Excuse me. I'm a little under the weather. I apologize. It's gotten to the point now where teachers have to fill out their lesson plans weeks ahead of time before they can...
Has the administrative state taken over Orange County? I use that tongue in cheek because it's like, the man is going to, you know, I mean, how does that affect teacher morale if all they're doing is filling out paperwork?
Well, it's not very good. It's not helping out very much at all. It's like, it gets to the point where, you know, they're having to do these lessons, lesson plans week ahead of time, to the point where they have to get them approved, make sure that they meet the uniform guidelines, the uniform policies that are... They come from the state, but then they also come from the school, and they come from the district, and they come from the...
Some of these are guidelines and not mandatory, right? There's kind of like a cafeteria line of, these are some of the things that you can embrace. It's up to the local school board and the local administrators to sort of pick and choose. Are these sort of those decisions that we're speaking of?
There are guidelines that come from the state, but then there are also policies that have to be followed.
Okay. So, we're speaking not of policy but of guidelines?
Well, guidelines and policies.
And policies, okay.
And local policies, yeah.
Right, okay. And so, are these mandatory or is this sort of like the... I guess what my question is, who is the authority that pushes for these? Where does the teacher have the power to design her curriculum without that sort of rigid oversight? Is that what we're dealing with here? Is that the question?
Sure. Well, a lot of the guidelines come from the state, but a lot of the policies come locally.
Okay.
And like I said, they come from... Policies come from building level. They come from the district level, district counties. They come from... Each teacher has a team of teachers under one lead. They have their policies that they have to follow, and all these guidelines that they have to follow.
When do they have time to teach?
That's a great question. I don't...
Wow.
So...
Interesting. And then, if you're kind of making a one-size-fits-all, I know when I buy a suit jacket, one-size-fits-all, it doesn't fit so good. So, how do you adjust to the diversity of learning styles for kids?
Exactly. There is no time. When you're trying to teach a class as a whole, there is no time to teach a class, to teach a student individually. And so, you have these students who they don't all learn the same.
Sure.
You know.
I'm a kinesthetic learner, I believe I'm told. I don't know what that means. I just know that my capacity for rote recall is terrible. But if it's relational to a very complex situation, spit it out like that.
Yeah.
Won't test on it. Fail that kid.
I like to listen. And, you know, kids do have their, you know, programs in place like IEPs, and we were discussing that a little bit before.
I've put two kids through IEPs, one more so than the other. Both of them are brilliant, but I think the term they use is twice exceptional.
Yeah.
I always joke, I said, sometimes I think if my kids are done, it would have been easier to raise them in a lot less work. That's not a nice thing to say, but sometimes smart kids take a lot of work.
Yeah, absolutely.
Now, do you have... Did you finish that thought? I didn't want to cut you off.
Well, and just the fact that, you know, teachers, as you said, they don't have time to teach. They don't even have time to do these lessons plans in the school when they're getting paid. A lot of times, they have to go home and do this on their free time.
I've seen that on my end.
You have? Okay. Well, then, there you go. You know exactly what's going on.
Now, Arlington's gotten better with it, I think, Fairfax, different counties. But I also think, I guess there's this flow of information up and down the food chain, if you will. What sort of feedback mechanism is there for teachers to report some of these struggles? Is there... Do they have agency or a voice through chain of command that says this is problematic? Or do they be quiet, do what you're told?
A lot of times, from what I've heard from teachers I've talked to about this problem, is that it's just kind of, you know, well, they can voice their opinions if they want to. And I don't know. I'm not a teacher, so I'm talking from the outside looking into this. So, nothing I say, I'm not trying to say this is the absolute truth because...
Well, everything's fluid, and, you know, everything's a spectrum. That's the whole thing about teaching kids, all of it.
Yeah.
Problems are... These are spectrum problems, especially in education. Now, Elon Musk has said before that basically the industrialization of school has ruined education. It's kind of like, I mean, I like a McDonald's hamburger.
But it's not going to be your local mom and pops over here. It's not going to be... Pizza Hut isn't going to be Mario's or Mama's Pizza, you know. It's just...
So, I guess what I'm hearing from you, just sort of kind of knock it down to nuts and bolts, is that you want to see a... An empowerment of the teacher to teach... To what they're... If I'm an English teacher, let me dig into English teaching. If I'm a science teacher or a math teacher, what... Sort of, can you dig into that a little bit? And what does that look like when rubber hits the road, do you think, for a school board position?
Sure, sure. When rubber hits the road, get rid of... And again, not all of the sterilization, because you do still have state sterilization. And some of it is important. But when you have it the way that it is now, it's just out of control to the point where teachers are no longer allowed to teach, and students are no longer allowed to learn. And it kind of gets to the point where, much like you said, it's like a microchip factory. It's just like, you know, get through this, do this, check this box, check this box. I mean, literally, they are forms where you have to check a box off that said, yep, made... I did that one, I did that, I met that goal, I met that goal, heredy, heredy. And, you know, and it just gets to the point where there is no... We are not respecting a teacher's capability.
As much money as they've spent, as much time as they've spent in school, we're not even letting them bring their abilities to do what they were trained to do.
Their experience. And the passion is gone, the joy of learning is gone, and we have teachers leaving because of it. And we have... And it gets to the point where we're also focusing so much on recruitment and not really on retention anymore. I mean, yes, the teachers do have benefits working there. But, I mean, we're talking about... You're looking at a county, and, you know, and I say this with all due respect to everyone in power right now, but you look at the... I'm a numbers guy.
Okay.
Before I was an EMT, I worked for GEICO as an insurance underwriter.
Oh, wow.
Even with EMT, you know, there's a lot of times where you're looking at the monitoring, you're saying, okay, they're at this number, that means this. I'm a numbers guy.
You have the mind of an actuary, which is a good thing.
Something like that, yeah.
Well, the complexity of... Well, the complexity of numbers, it's a science and it's an art.
Yes, very much is.
Yeah.
And when you look at the numbers, you look at Orange, and we are, if I remember this correctly, I don't remember the exact numbers. I have them written down somewhere. But we are the... With all the counties that are around us, we are either like the second or the third highest in our revenue. However, we...
Per capita?
I believe...
Per student?
No, I'm talking about like just county revenue.
Okay.
All over, like the overarching revenue of the county. We're something, I think, like a hundred ninety-four million. And you look at Flavanna County, who is eighty-eight million, which is way more than less than half of the revenue that we have. And they are paying their teachers more than what we are paying our teachers.
Now, I've heard that there is a boat of administrative staff compared to what it was in the past. Could it be said that that large administrative payroll and staffing is part and parcel of administering these policies?
It could be.
Something to look into.
Something to look into, most definitely.
We don't want to put people's heads on the chopping block, but...
No, and I...
Fresh eyes can solve problems with fresh perspectives.
Absolutely, absolutely. And I do want to say, I'm sorry. Everyone, I'm sorry.
That's vodka, by the way. Just teasing. No, it's not vodka. It's just...
It's only...
It's Unionville well water. It's about... How is that? Isn't that good?
It's very great water, yeah. It's very good water. I grew up... One of the churches I grew up... Well, let me get to this point, and then I'll get to that point.
We can have fun later.
So, I just, I mean, I do want to say that Dr. Horneck is an absolutely great guy.
I've heard that.
I have nothing against Dr. Horneck whatsoever. I think that he's been an amazing superintendent. Every question that I've had a concern about, there have been questions that I've sent to the board of supervisors that I have not gotten an answer back to. I have gotten an answer from Dr. Horneck. Every time I email him, he's very quick, emails me back the same day. So, I do have to say, he's a great guy. I have nothing...
So, looking forward, do you see Dr. Horneck as a solution to change? As the community starts to advocate, advocate for some of these changes collectively, assuming you win? You're certainly, I'm assuming, that you've spoken to some of the voters out there, and you've heard so... Out there campaigning and polling, and, I mean, at the end of the day, you're your own pollster, I guess, unless you... Did you hire a pollster, or are you boots on the ground trying to figure it out? You are your own pollster.
You're looking at the campaign staff right here.
Yeah, right, right. Well, and so...
Who am I, Joe Fine? I don't have you though.
Yeah, right, exactly. Who... What are some of the themes that you see from parents out there? Grandparents looking at what went wrong.
Right.
Parents looking at what they hope for, kind of like the back end and the front end of this, of this, you know, this endeavor to raise productive, capable children into adults in the county.
Well, I think there's... Well, I think there's two areas here that we can look at. There is the national kind of what everyone's talking about, the really hot-button topics that everyone's talking about, things like parents' rights and, you know, curriculum and things like that. And then there's the more local things, like what's happening with the teachers, what's happening with the grades? Why are we using this program and not that program? One of the big things that, excuse me, that I can talk about, as a parent, one of the programs that we used to use was Google Classroom. And all of a sudden, I forget, it was several years ago, just all of a sudden, we went from using Google Classroom to using Canvas and Power School, which are okay programs.
Are they proprietary in a revenue stream?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Everything is, everything is.
Google, Google, little less of that kind of hammer? I mean, Google's ubiquitous. You can use Google for free, or you can spend more money. But everything I've ever done with Google has been reasonably priced and sort of more generalized in terms of how it meets the needs of its customer?
Right.
Whereas Canvas tends to be, I guess, where is this? Is this designed on a national level? Is this a state level? Where does Canvas come from?
Well, it is a, you know, it is a larger company, certainly not as large as Google.
Right.
But, you know, it's a company, they have a parent company. I don't know why they decided to switch from Google Classroom to Canvas and Power School. I wasn't in on that meeting.
When did that happen? Do you know when that shift came?
It was a few years ago. I remember that. I'm pretty sure that like when my son was in middle school. I'm pretty sure, yes, sir. When my son was in middle school, we were still using Google Classroom. One of the things that I would love to accomplish, speaking on parents' rights, is one of the concerns that parents have is not being able to see what their kids are learning, or not being able to, you know, be able to check out what their students are learning. Now, according to school policy...
Auditing classes.
If you will, yes, sir.
Yeah.
Now, as of school policy, and I forget which policy it is, it's... I forget which policy it is exactly, but per school policy right now, parents do have the right to look at any learning material that their kids want to... Are learning. They just need to put in the request, and they can look at it at any time. I think they do put in a clause there that says they may take a little bit of time for them to collect the material and distribute it.
But it's not available through automation. It has to... A person has to sort of open that door? How does that information present?
Well, a lot of times, what... How it should be is that you can go on to Canvas, or you can go on to Power School, and you can see, like, you know, the kids get...
What the kids are learning.
Right. But a lot of times, you know, the teachers are so weighed down by all the sterilization.
God forbid they have to report for helicopter parents on top of helicopter administrators.
No comment?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
But, you know, I mean, it's like, they have all that stuff, and then plus the technical people that is supposed to be working on this, and is supposed to be making the assignments and the grades and everything available to the parents on demand, that really, they can't because you have all the... First, you have all the sterilization coming from the local level, which is what we talked about. Another problem is sterilization from the state level. I can tell you that standardized testing, since COVID, has come back in. Standardized testing has doubled in the amount.
And I also understand that benchmarks have been lowered. I've read this before. Do you know anything about that? I could... May not be accurate, but I know that post-COVID, we had a whole... We had all these score dips.
Yeah.
And then we had more parents going, whoa, this is what's going on?
Right.
So, there was like perfect storm of kind of, I guess, it got pretty raucousy, I guess is the word.
Sure.
Parents started getting involved because they had to.
Sure.
And then, I understand that scores are down in general terms. Have you... I've heard this on campaigns that have been mentioned, that across the board, score levels are down in Orange County by comparison. We went from one number to another number. Have you heard anything to that effect?
I don't... I mean, to a degree, I believe.
I've heard it tossed around.
Yeah, I think that's kind of more on a... I mean, just that's happening everywhere.
Sure.
And, I mean, especially since, you know, I mean, I can tell you as a parent, my kids struggled. Struggled after coming back from COVID and being away during COVID. That is one of the major reasons why I decided to run.
So, we're still picking up the pieces of that quagmire.
We are, and I predict that we will be, not just as a county, but as a state and as a nation for...
And as a country.
As a country for a very long time.
Well, you know what they say about a problem? Problems are opportunities.
They can be, absolutely. If the right attitude and the right people get into it, absolutely, yes, sir.
So, I suppose moving forward, it's a fair statement to suggest that with your capacity for numbers, you're going to look at these from numbers.
Absolutely.
Also, as an EMT, you're used to dealing with people... Um, also, as an E M T, you're used to dealing with people in difficult states, you know, it's it's um. I always say that that's um, I pulled up on an accident one time, I heard a child crying, nothing had happened to the child. But to pull up to an accident and hear a child crying, I'm like, oh my gosh.
Pediatrics.
Yeah.
Pediatrics is the worst, I mean, especially, uh and you know.
And that opens up our Papa Bear Mama Bear care for kids, and so you being a parent. I mean, it it certainly sounds like you're, you know, you're bringing Papa Bear into there to try to help.
Honestly, that you probably couldn't have said it better. I mean, one of the things, the reason why, I mean, really what got me going in onto this. Adventure of mine here is that it wasn't. It, like I said, going into twenty twenty-three, I was not predicting I would be doing this. I've never predicted I'd be doing this. I don't really like politics and to be honest, I'm not really a politician. It's not obvious.
Those days are gone now, pal.
Yeah, I got a stuck a tongue way there.
Well, I mean, but you know, the thing is, uh you're a big fan of Madison.
Yes, sir.
You grew up um um play and hide and seek at Montpelier, I guess.
My mother was the very, she can tell you, she was the very, she says she was the very first official tour guide that was hired. Um by Montpelier after the National Trust.
So this is right after DuPont sold it?
Well, Marion DuPont Scott died.
Okay.
And she she left it in her will, saying that she wants the property go to National Trust.
Okay.
Shortly after she died, there was a big legal battle with her niece.
What, over property and family?
I know, right?
How does that happen?
I know, right, it's kinda like, yeah, this is.
With with money, names and money, that never happens.
Yeah, that's what we're talking about here. But um, yeah, so you know, after that, the big legal battle happened, finally National Trust ended up winning. So they got the property and in nineteen eighty-seven, they opened and they hired my mom as the first tour guide.
Oh, that's cool.
Yeah, and then after, you know, after uh I got out of uh Orange Elementary School there, it's uh, I I. I'm a lifelong resident of District Three in particular.
Okay.
Yeah, well, I'm running. Um, but uh, yeah, after school, you know, my, I would go out there and just kinda hang out. Either with my mom while she did her tours, I'd just be hanging around around the property, but. It was during those times, I grew up with the philosophical mindset of James Madison. And I really, really have come to appreciate the things that he stood for.
His mind.
His mind, yes, sir.
Yeah.
Um, there are things that I don't agree with, and there are things I don't think he would agree with.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, you know, it's kinda funny, I often remind people, it's like, it's okay to change your mind. His last words were, just a simple change of mind, my dear, and then he died. You know, so it's okay.
We're all evolving and this is all an experiment and uh none of us get out of this alive, for starters.
No.
Um, but also, I think um uh the, it's easy for us to throw rocks at the past, not being in their shoes.
Exactly.
Uh it's easy to armchair quarterback, man, he should have thrown him fifty yard pass back into there and this, that and the other. I mean, nobody knows and his history, you know, I I I say this, and I'd love to hear you talk talking about Google.
Sure.
Google gets every piece of information possible at every nanosecond of time and still can't figure it out.
Yes, sir.
So you think about the data input that Google has with every single second and. We're still struggling.
We are, we are.
So when you go back and try to sort of look at those things, it's complex, you know, I, we were talking about this old school book here from the fifties and. Kinda looking at it um um, as I mentioned, yeah, uh maybe from the fifties, it's a social studies book.
Yeah.
And uh it's all about founding fathers, uh the original uh founding members of, you know. I guess it take away the word founding father and talk about the people that were walking on this land, trying to figure it out and make it work.
Yeah, yeah.
And so, you know, and I suppose in 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 the school board, every day's a new day and there's gonna be a lot of sort of uh figuring out.
It is, and that's really why I'm trying, I I'm really trying not to be overly critical about the school board and what they did in the past.
Right.
You know, I can sit here and I can.
Fresh eyes.
Right, I mean, I I can sit here and I can say all day long, well, what they did during COVID was a was a travesty, but. The thing is, I mean, you know, they were doing what they could with the information that they had. I don't, I may not agree with it, I don't agree with it now, I didn't agree with it then.
Yeah.
But it's really easy for me to sit here kind of on my armchair quarterback place and say. Hey, you should have done this, you should have done that.
Yeah, yeah, we can all throw rocks at people.
Right, and I wasn't the one that was in the leadership position then with both the the state breathing down my neck and the.
Oh, it was a toxic environment.
I'm sure that it was.
I remember um, you know, and you had, you had new powers given to even the um health board, local health board had new powers.
Yeah.
Police powers, essentially.
Yeah.
Um, and it it was, it was understandable. But then this goes back to top-down decision-making sometimes when you don't sort of have. A agency for the people that are in the trenches and no way for information to flow back up.
Yeah.
Um, it 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 goes back to, you know, it's built to fail.
Uh, sort of like the nine eleven commission said that it was a failure of imagination. And I I think that this was kind of a, in the same degree.
You know, that's a good thing, and I I think this kinda circles us back with what I was saying earlier, that we now know. That local politics is where we can work collectively as a country.
Yeah.
To make.
Absolutely.
The nation better.
Absolutely.
I think, I think what a lot of people are seeing, and I mean, even me, I'm here, here we are talking, I mean. Normally, I guess I'd be watching Jay Leno or something back in the day, I I don't know, I'm dating myself, I don't, I don't want, now it's YouTube, now. It's my own television, I don't watch anybody else's, I'm trying to make it, but the point being is that. These are, these are good opportunities for us to all get involved and.
Absolutely.
Um, and 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 put our finger finger on the scale towards success.
Absolutely, yes, sir.
So we all work together, and I I've said to a lot of people, no matter who wins or loses, cause I've been trying to help a lot of people get their messages out there. If nothing else, we're building a um a dialogue between members of the community.
Yes.
You wouldn't see me until you picked me up when I fell out of a tree doing something stupid. Now we have a conversation with each other.
Don't, don't do something stupid.
Yeah, don't do something too too late. That's that's my uh, what is that? That's my um. Uh, that's my call to fame.
Yeah, yeah.
What's the new stupid thing today?
Yeah, Payne is an excellent teacher, that's what my son's karate teacher says.
Oh, yeah, very true. So, well, um, early voting's coming out, so everybody needs to get out there and do their early voting. Um, and uh I, you know, I suppose. That they can reach out to you on your website and and ask questions and uh where would they find you?
Yeah, absolutely, it's a marquee for schoolboard.com. Uh I got my email there, you can also visit my Facebook page. Um, yeah, you can see a lot more of my policy uh there and the things that I wanna do, of course, what, we're kind of a little bit limited on time and.
Yeah.
We didn't, we didn't hit everything, um but.
We can revisit later if you'd like, I I've been uh, I'm a big fan of Joe Rogan, I can do a two-hour long form. Um, if you like, what we can do is we can pause, close this up and pick it right back up, or what's your time like tonight?
Oh, um, probably not, not tonight, cause I'm feeling a little bit.
Okay, good.
But um, but.
So maybe a part two?
Yeah, sure.
Airplane, what was that? Uh I.
Airplane part two.
Part two, yeah, yeah, yeah. Um, no, it would be nice.
Surely you can't be serious.
No, I'm I'm serious and don't kill me, surely. Uh uh, these people need to see a doc, a hospital, a hospital doctor, what is it? Oh, it's a building with lots of patients in it, but that's not important right now.
That's not boring right now, right?
Yeah, we're dating ourselves really bad now.
That's one of my favorite movies.
Funny. So um, you know, before we wind up, and yeah, I I hope you feel better, um uh. As we get through this election and as we move forward into these school board meetings.
Yeah.
We do know that there's been a lot of polarization in these meetings. And um it's it's tough. Um, uh, you've got people kind of on far ends, sort of barking each other post-COVID. You know, moving forward, any thoughts on sort of unifying the community and giving everyone a voice in these school board meetings? I mean, how 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 do you look at these school board meetings and sort of de-conflict these things? Kinda like. I mean, the one-on-one of 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 I I imagine as in in rescue and also in law enforcement. Part of the process is to try to de-conflict so that you can solve problems. Any thoughts on de-confliction?
Well, I I, a lot of it has to do.
This is a pokey question, I know, but I couldn't softball everything to you today.
You're fine, you're fine, no, I'm I welcome it. Um, yeah, you know, I mean, as far as attitude is concerned, you can't. Uh, you 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 can't make a law about attitude, and that really what it what it boils down to. Um, I can't force you to have a positive attitude against someone's opinion that you may strongly disagree with, or my opinion if you strongly disagree with it. Um, what I hope to happen, what I hope to to help uh accomplish is to bring in, as you say, more dialogue. One of the things that I that I promised to do, and I've been, I posted this on, this is one of the first things I think I posted on the Facebook pa- page, is that. Uh, something that I will refuse to do is vote on any policy. Unless the, unless certain criteria have been met, which is until thirty days have come forward that the policy has been introduced. That there has been a school board meeting with public comment so that.
Both written and and oral or uh do do do? Don't mean to cut you off, but.
Sure.
One of the things, I guess, in in the court of law, you can file an amicus brief, you can give, you know, file a brief to the uh to the body, governing body and says. Hey, here's some thoughts on this.
Sure.
Um, uh, and then also, uh, so, cause the reason I ask this, I'm I'm going somewhere with this.
Sure.
One of the problems that I've seen is that sometimes you got motivated actors. And they're collectively working together. Uh, pretty far out, and um people don't read newspapers like they used to.
No.
The the chain of communication is not as robust as it is. Good example today, the Solar posting just popped up. You know, I'm I'm not gonna weigh in on that, they can all have fun with that. Um.
That's another story.
Yeah, yeah, which I refuse to even get involved, property rights, uh I I want my, you know, I want my cat to play in your field. Yeah, you could go anywhere with that.
Yeah.
But um, the process.
Yeah.
Are we gonna follow the spirit of the process or the letter of the process? And one of the things that I've seen is that. In trying to control this chaos of a school board meeting. You have your regular actors, your regular players that show up and know the process.
Yeah.
How do you suggest moving forward that these parents? Can get agency and can get involved in the process? If I can't go to a meeting at six o'clock, cause I'm working, how do I engage that?
Right, exactly.
Can I write a letter? Can I submit a letter? Is, would there, could you promise to give agency in writing? Uh, uh, for review and, I mean, we've got all these administrative, you know, uh assets.
Right.
Um, how does a parent uh send an email? And you mentioned Dr.
Dr. Horneck.
Horneck is pretty adept at following to these emails. I wonder if there is a sort of a. A a process to sort of be able to write an email. Any any thoughts on that? Have you seen anything to that effect?
Sure, I mean, if you go to the to the school board website now, you can look at every every one of them and they all have their emails on there and you can. Send an email, um they also have their phone numbers there. I I believe that um, I was talking to uh to Mike Jones. One time and he told me that that phone number there is his own personal phone number, you call it, you're calling him.
Okay.
As I plan to do, I mean, if I, you know, I'm, you know, I have really, I mean.
So the idea is you call.
Yeah, or call or email or.
And with your thirty-day notification, you're giving people chance to sort of that information to sort of percolate through. Uh, the body parent.
And what inspired that, this policy of mine is that one of the first. Well, one of the, one of the kind of things that really hit the nail on the head for me when I decided to run for this position. Is that I found a post on Facebook, it was just from a person, I don't even remember what what group it was in.
Was it me?
It wasn't you, I remember it was a mom, it was it was a mom, so I don't think it it was, it was you.
Good, okay.
But um, eh eh they were saying, uh, hey, we need to get together and and show support for for something tonight at the school board meeting. And I'm like, oh, okay, they didn't really specify what that, what the support was for. So I was like, oh, okay, and I'm seeing this Fri- or not Friday, it was Mon- Monday night, I believe, the night of the school board meeting. So I said, well, goodness, what's could be going on? So I called the uh the uh Taylor Education Center, I said, hey, what's uh. You know, what's up, what's going on? And they said to me, well, they're uh, they're doing a uh a uh potential policy. Change, they're bringing it up for discussion. I'm like, well, can you tell me what what the policy change is? And it seems like a lot of people fired up about it. And they said, you know, you gotta go on the website and look at it. And I'm like, okay, well, fair enough. Well, if I go on the website and take a look at it, can I sign up to speak? And they said, no, you're past the limit.
See, this is what I was getting at, yeah, then so it 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 did. De facto, try to get it by as quick as possible to suffer as few slinging arrows as you can. Back to not the spirit of the process, the letter of the process.
Correct.
So I I think what I'm hearing from you is you you wanna get back to the spirit of that governance.
I wanna represent the people.
Yeah.
I don't wanna represent myself or my own interest, I wanna represent the people who I represent.
Makes sense.
And from both sides of the aisle, I wanna hear if parents have a concern. I was a parent with a concern. This is my kid in school, this policy could be affecting, how is it going to affect him? And can I speak my mind about it? Nope, sorry, you're past the deadline.
Yeah, I'd seen that, and that's actually what I was digging at in that question earlier, is that I had seen and. You just, okay, I'll just go there and just sit back, and of course, my kids were already through, but being a parent that was involved with two kids and so eventually. I moved my daughter out into um uh my brother's house, cause I was having some troubles with the with the schools. And you know, so many people mean well, but I was getting to the point where, I've always said that one of the dilemmas of. Middle school and high school is that there is tremendous cultural sway with your kids.
Yeah, absolutely.
And when I worked in Falkir Systems, I remember, and I mentioned this to you earlier, the three things that make all the difference in the world in each individual's school. Leadership, leadership, leadership.
Yes, sir.
And you would see a culture in one school, a culture in another, a culture in another, and they could be right next door to each other.
Yeah.
But you would, you would see that defined by the leadership. And uh I'm hoping that, you know, with what goes forward, that there is a um a process. That without throwing people under the bus, measures the quality of leaders in these individuals and eh kinda like a feedback loop, if you will. All right, I know a guy, a young guy who wrote a piece of code, just an anecdotal story to finish up. Uh, a guy I know who uh was very hyper, um wonderful guy, I won't mention his name, but I really enjoyed him. Uh, part of the family, uh uh wrote a piece of code. Uh, he was a code-writing kid in high school and wrote a, wrote a, wrote a uh piece of code for an app of which teacher do you dislike the most in high school? And of course, this program took off, and he got, I think he got suspended and in all kinds of trouble. But here's an innovative guy who's using computer skills and needless to say, this individual is very uh up the food chain. Um, uh for a very large corporation for internet security.
Okay.
So, you know, you take these kids that are disruptive, and I know of another kid who was also disruptive, one of my son's friends who. Um, went from being a problem child to. Le- didn't learn it in school, like to Votek, learned how to um design rafters on the CAD machine over there by the rafter place. By the airport.
Okay.
And that individual now is, uh as I understand, involved in designing um wings for fighter planes.
Oh, wow, okay.
This is not college educated, this is Votek driven.
Absolutely.
So these practical skills, and I know a lot of people are talking about Votek. Um, trying to, you know, there's a big debate about where we're gonna put it.
C T E.
Yeah, um, you know, and I I I wish you luck navigating those waters, I'm I'm a big fan of uh, from what I had seen. You know, I wonder, you know, they're talking about. Sticking Votek in an old building that's sitting by the high school, other people are talking about, well, wait a minute, let's take a fresh look at this. I know you can put lipstick on a pig, it's still a pig, you know? Um, and.
Make it look better, but.
Yeah, make it look better, but you know, uh, one of the candidates is talking about taking a much more overarching view and. Uh, sort of a long game and uh, um and to that end, I'd sort of like the last question, cause we do need to touch on this.
Sure.
Um, do you see? The C T E program as being foundational to helping our kids and our grandkids? Have meaningful employment, developing meaningful skills in the county. Uh, for businesses that are developing in the county. I mean, do you see a future for? For a a a more comprehensive approach to have the education that would include multiple disciplines, you know, not just a mechanic and a. And a hair cutter, do you see a little more expansive approach to that?
Uh, couple layers to that, to that answer here.
Oh, yeah, I'm sure.
The number one answer to that is absolutely, absolutely. I think that, I mean, while it's not just me thinking, I know there are studies. I think that, I mean, while it's not just me thinking, I know there are studies and if you go to my website, you can look at these studies that I reference here. Is that there have been studies proving that hands-on uh, ex- um, experienced learning. Causes kids to be able to remember and to learn more.
It's kinesthetic learning.
Absolutely, absolutely. It's experienced learning and that's what, like, one of the things I I would really like to push for is to take more advantage of our local resources. Like Montpelier or like the James Madison Museum.
More labs.
Yes, more more things.
The labs are problematic because you don't have to pay somebody else to uh. Yeah, you don't have to pay a large overseer uh, for an online uh, equivalency of a lab.
Sure.
Um, you can actually put people out in 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 local uh, experiences.
Yeah, but you know, it gets, but it 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 stimulates the local economy.
Sure, oh yeah.
It it gets kids to learn more about where they're from and and the locality is where they're at. I would love to be able to take advantage of some of the, like, the Orange Historical Society, African American Historical Society. Everything that has happened here on a national level has happened here in Orange, from the Civil War to the Civil Rights Movement, from the foundation of our country to. Everything, we have it all here, but we don't, at least I have it, my son. Since he was, he started in Head Start, I raised my son in the Orange County Public School Systems, as I myself was raised in Orange County Public School Systems. And he's taken maybe a a handful of field trips and none of them have been really local, they've all been the like Gettysburg or Jameson. Which I'm not saying those are, that's bad, but I'm saying it's that we have things right here in our own backyard. That we could be taking advantage of, that we could be ultimately saving funds on, should we take advantage of?
The Governor Barbara uh, ruins?
Barbersville ruins, yep, absolutely.
Interesting thing, no one's ever gone there, I've never seen it, but the history of Raccoon Ford and that crossing down there.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Um, the site of the old courthouse. Uh, the site of uh, of um, uh. Governor Spotswood's ruins.
And see, the thing is, we could get you involved with your surveying, with with your surveying, you know, we we could get kids to learn about surveying. And see if that's some, see if that's a, you know, career that they would wanna get into, and if they do, well, yeah, you can teach them how to do it.
Well, I can't teach him anything, I'm the, I'm the, I'm the last guy at the end of the surveying crew. Who gets uh, uh, who gets spitballs now and then, hurry up, you big dummy, no, it's it's nice. This is a recent thing for me and I'm very thankful.
I feel like that's me in the back of the.
Yeah, 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 exactly. Where 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 the, what is it, where are the uh, the the where the bottom of the whipping pole or the the whipping boy? No, but it you're right, and I, it's a fortunate thing for me to be able to walk the land of Orange County and uh. I definitely hope that maybe, uh, you know, you know, I have my Molly Patriot channel and I I try to lean into.
Five hundred subscriber.
Oh, that's right, number five hundred. Now I'm at like five twenty, I um, uh, uh, I uh, I. Really, it's interesting, I get a lot of good numbers of views, I'm like, well, I'm not Nick Fritas, I didn't get a million views, but then I, my wife was like, honey. If a hundred and fifty people in the county are looking at your video, you're doing pretty good. I'm like, but Nick Fritas has got three billion views. Maybe I need to.
Well, he's like a national.
Yeah, I need to dance in some sort of crazy uh, um, outfit, uh, you know, on top of a Subaru on Tic Tac or TikTok or something.
Let's do it, my campaign doesn't have a whole lot of funds, we can both.
Yeah, there we go, we'll cross pollinate.
Yeah, absolutely.
So are you self-funding, I guess, at this point?
I've had some donations from from family, from friends, uh. Everything's mostly been, well, I think the only non-local donation I've had was my mom's neighbor up in Delaware.
Oh, nice, okay.
Yeah, and then, I mean, if you wanna consider, all my brothers were raised here in Orange, but they don't live here in Orange anymore, I'm the only one left, so. They have donated to my campaign, thanks everybody.
So you did a lot of self-funding and mainly family and friends?
Uh, yeah, and and some people from my past, I know a couple, uh, a a teacher of mine donated, um. A good friend of of lifelong friends of ours have donated, so it it's all been kind of people I've been.
I'm glad to hear that, I I I I'm nervous to ask those questions, because these are awkward, everybody has to file their campaign. Um, uh, reports and uh, there's places for people to go look at that. My big statement has been, you've seen my social media, it's like, come on, folks, tell us where you're getting your money from, where are you headed with this, where's this bus driving? You know, and um.
I'm the bus.
Yeah, I'm the, right, I'm the bus. Yeah, here's a short bus, right?
I I'm, I don't have a spare in the back, y'all, so don't.
So, um, one of the things, so, okay, this is your only, only, and you can demure on this, I think that's the correct term, if you care to. You know, we had a little bit of a bumpy back and forth with this last band teacher thing and. And sort of kinda like this personnel from the bottom up and I I know there's a a a a sort of a um. A a difficult struggle around this disclosure of information concerning. How some kids didn't really like the way they were being treated and what is sort of like this, what is the culture of the school? And um, is there, is there in your view, a way to have more transparency on these things? Or are these things just locked down because of privacy? Any thoughts on that?
Well, there's, I mean, there is a lot of stuff that's locked down in privacy, as well as it should. I mean, when, like you said with the band teacher, my son was heavily involved in band and that was one of the things, one of the catalysts that got me into doing what I'm doing. Uh, was when he was.
He didn't get asked this, did you? The Molly Patriot does his research.
He did it again.
Inquiring minds want to know.
Writing a kisser, I'm gonna get that guy.
Well, I know that there was a little pushback on that, there was a little pushback about the lockdown on the school, the big question of. You know, we're out of the loop, we're out of the loop, we're out of the loop, you know, um. Do you imagine that there is an opportunity for more robust sort of back and forth between parents or? Press releases, maybe, that's a little more specific?
I mean, if if nothing else, I mean, you know, we kind of, our newspaper is mostly online now, I mean, it wasn't, I mean, it's still.
Do we have a newspaper? I have a few videos on that. Check this out, but yeah, I I I know, um, yeah, it it it, the world is changing and and and. And media press, which is why we're here. I mean, I'm basically the new local access TV. At the end of the day, which is, sorry about that, this is all you get, folks.
I'm here.
Yeah, yeah, I know, we got, we got the man.
You got me, I don't know how much how much that's worth, but you got me.
No, it's not, no, it's it's worth a lot and I'm very thankful for you coming out, but to just sort of tie that down, any thoughts on that, you know, is there um. Um, is it is there, is there, is there any sort of expanded conversation on that that you might sort of throw in?
Oh, yeah, I think so, I think that we could um, do better with transparency, I think that we can have more channels open now, I. Again, I understand, I'm not, I was deeply shocked with with the band teacher. When all that, when all that happened, I was about as shocked as everybody else was. I understand, and I said from the beginning, I said at that school board meeting, and I'll still say it now. Is that if he did anything inappropriate or anything illegal, I understand that we're not gonna be, that we're not gonna know and we shouldn't know. But if he did, and the point I'm, I was trying to press there is that if he did anything like that, then he absolutely should be fired and he should be held legally accountable. I don't know what he did to be removed, I'm not saying that's what he did.
Right, we don't know.
I don't know.
Now, Loudoun had a problem with some, with some sort of how how this, how the school wasn't as transparent as they could have been. So this kinda leans into your your promise to be transparent, whenever possible, to the letter of the law.
It to, exactly, it's kinda like to the point I was, you know, making earlier is that, you know, when uh. With that subject that I just got last minute that I couldn't comment on, I mean, here I am, a parent of an actual Orange County student. And I can't talk to my own school board, when we have, I think, if I remember correctly, I think there were people there at that school board meeting who weren't even from Orange. Who got to speak in for the school board. And I was just kinda like, okay, so what about me? Where, you know, where are my rights here? And you know, it was kind of, I felt a little bit. I mean, maybe, maybe if I was paying more close attention to the websites and to and to everything that was going on.
Maybe if you didn't have to work and all you had to do, like me, was stay on social media.
Right, yeah, I mean, you know, maybe, but absolutely, I think that, and going back to the whole, let's lessen standardization. If we can lessen standardization, if we can take some some of that away, at least from the local level, and that's gonna free up. But I was talking about our our technology people that run Canvas and that run Power School. It's gonna be able to free them up to be able to work on those things, on those programs, to be able to more freely.
Give them more bandwidth to do.
Exactly.
Directives.
And be able to more freely flow that information to parents i- in in a timely manner. But you know, it's like, when when you're looking at, when you're looking at standardization testing doubling since COVID, and I I I still can't get over that. That um, this isn't.
We had too much standardized tests in the first place.
And, yeah, when it first started, but um, I mean, you know, I'll, I'll say that there are some standardization testing that. I think is okay, but when it comes way overboard like it has, then it's no longer helping, it's damaging. It's causing these kids to to hurt, it's not, it's not helping these kids learn, it's causing them to hurt. All they're trying to do is figure out how to take a test and all the teachers are trying to do it, all the school administrators.
How to give the test.
Trying to give the test.
And then if the numbers don't come out right, everybody gets beaten up.
Do you remember Common Core?
I know there was a lot of debate about Common Core, thumbs up, thumbs down, thumbs down, thumbs down, thumbs up, thumbs down, back and forth, back and forth.
That's basically what we're looking at now, and let's, let's look at those words, common, meaning let's make everything uniform. And core, meaning the absolute central part of it. That's exactly what we're doing here, we're taking the central part of education and making everything common, we're making everything the same. What you're doing here in this school is gonna be the exact same thing that you're doing there in that school. And it just, i- i- it gets to the point where the uniqueness of learning and and I'm sorry, we're we're now going back to conversation, three conversations ago.
This is long form, this is our, this is our bandwidth. You don't like it, turn off, go watch a TikTok.
Yeah, right, no, don't watch TikTok.
Don't watch TikTok, that is not an endorsement. No, I mean, you you to revisit that is to reemphasize the importance of it.
Absolutely.
I think, I think sometimes the message, sometimes, you know, we we we're wandering through this, you know, this is dense stuff. You know, we can simplify it and sort of go to speaking points, but the things that resonate. Um, I think sometimes when you're trying to problem solve, you know, we walk through these problems together as a community. Um, we we figure some things out, and I think with what you're saying about being open and working through it, and all of us working together. But. Keeping the community involved, and I think this is the first thing that you said to me that sort of spoke to me, was the one time when one of the members voted on delaying something.
Yes.
Because there wasn't enough notification and you were like.
I believe that was Ms. Quinn term. And yeah, she, um, I believe that she made it a point to say that, you know, uh, one of her. Uh, policies going into office was transparency, and that when we only are giving our our community and our parents a week. And that that policy that came out, they only had, we only had a week. It was, they proposed it a week before and we only had a week to be able to figure out what was going on, let alone.
Is that baked in? That that narrow window to just get past it? Well, to throw a, just throw a big sticky prickly hot potato out there and go, okay, next second, next second. Uh, by the way. Next, second.
I I don't know, I'm not really a politician, I can tell you.
Well, you will be.
Hopefully.
Well, thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
And I I do look forward to uh, maybe uh, another follow-up, um. Um, hopefully, you know, moving forward, uh, maybe some of the candidates, uh, win, lose or draw, will come back and talk about things as they develop. We may find there's an opportunity here on the new channel I've created, uh, Orange County, Virginia Voters, which is basically just a a sort of a clearinghouse for. Content and subject matter, maybe if you see things coming, we may be able to revisit these and we can, we can self. You know, we can basically collectively crowdsource these solutions, um, and 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 ring leadership spell. Through the iPhone twelve.
For the iPhone twelve.
And the Google Pixel, yeah.
Moving on up.
Yeah, moving up, right, 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 well, thank you so much.
Uh, one, one other thing I did wanna touch on real quick is that I did say I grew up in Orange County Baptist Church, which is true. But I also grew up in that church right there, Unionville Christian Church, which is right down the road.
That's where my daughter went.
Oh, is it really?
Yeah, she went there on her own, I'm like, where's Sarah? Oh, she's in church, I'm like, oh.
I was, I was baptized in this church, um, yeah, um, uh, pastor, um.
Now, that burnt down, didn't it, and the one that's up is new, I I, there's been a couple of church fires up there.
So, this.
Let's pull it down and show everybody.
Sure, yeah, yeah, absolutely, I, that's cool that you have that plate.
Unionville Christian Church, Unionville, Virginia, organized in eighteen seventy-one, there it is, if you all can see that.
Shortly after the Civil War, um, Reverend Perry.
P R R Y?
Correct, he came, he came back home and uh, he he decided to become a preacher of the um, of the, what's called the Restoration Movement. You can, you know, look that up on whatever Wikipedia or Google or whatever, but he formed this church, this was um. This was the newer building, the older building was kind of like a a unified meeting house of all the different faiths and.
That was the original Unionville Church.
That was the original Unionville.
Now it's Methodist now, right?
This one is is not, no, there is a Methodist church right next to it. But this one is still part of that Restoration Movement, um, you 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 hear, fill in the blank, Christian Church, that's that's these guys. And um, yeah, I was baptized in this church, uh, George Vartanesian was the pastor baptized me and. Yeah, a lot of my friends, uh, a lot of people that I loved are buried in that cemetery out there.
Um, and if I understand correctly, cause I've been trying to figure this out, cause back to history, we may as well go there, we can. It's our, it's our, it's our time, um, you can turn out and go, go, go cook spaghetti.
It's a free country, do whatever.
It's a free country, do whatever you want, we we do no, no bless, no blessed oblige, I think it's the term, anyway. Um, probably not, that probably, I just cuss people in French, my apologies, uh, suckle blue. The original Unionville Church was up in the cemetery area, wasn't it?
Where the cemetery is now.
Yeah, kinda up, not in the middle of it, but slightly to the right, maybe where one of the roads is.
From what I understand, you know, you got.
We need to figure that out, cause I.
We really do, we really do, and um, it's it's a shame, I I know it's probably still there in a church library, I wrote this big.
We need to go there.
Yeah, we do, we do, we need to talk to to them and see if we can, cause I check at the Historical Society and and they.
Unionville doesn't exist at the Historical Society.
I tried to.
By and large.
I really tried to.
But I found the Clark information and uh, and of course, you know. We're gonna figure this one out, cause this may be the big tell about, you can't see the beams in the room here. But uh.
Right over there.
Yeah, they're right over there, and and do those look like eighteen seventy, like having beams?
They look old, I mean, I I'm not, I'm not a, I'm neither a politician or an architect, but they look pretty old.
Dendrocanologist.
Or what you said.
One of that there things, but um, the, I, so I I maintain the position. That if you go back to the seventeen twenties Watts, uh, which is about three miles that way. Pine Stick, what are we, three miles from Pine Stick, give or take?
Give or take, yeah.
Um, that original, um. Grant given in seventeen twenty, and most people don't realize that when the paperwork shows up in seventeen twenty. It doesn't mean, okay, now you can go there, normally, they've been there for a while. And it documents for it, with changes of England leadership, who's in power, so on and so forth. There's no telling when somebody actually sat there, speaking of which. So I found this, I wanna show this to you, I think you'll appreciate, we're shifting in history, folks.
Yeah, yeah, we're, we're done with the school board thing now, we're we're doing it, we're doing the history.
Yeah, we're doing the history thing, I wanna show you something, I think you'll appreciate. If I can find it, so I've been collecting pottery.
I have seen your uh, collection, I think that is.
And I am digging, 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 so this is the east side of the Clark, yeah, when I got deep, you can see those and, um. And I'm looking and then, of course, I've got glass, this is what all comes out of one pit. Um, adjacent to the house, so they've, they've been busy doing a lot of things here. And you can see, what I wanna show you. Yeah, this is more, a lot of beautiful, beautiful glass and pottery.
Cobalt blue in here, that's, that's very.
There's a ton of stuff here, but I'm looking for my favorite find. And uh, yeah, look at this, some of this stuff, it's beautiful.
Oh, wow, oh, wow, yeah, check that out.
Yeah, a lot of really beautiful stuff, beautiful bodies, white and, um, I found some radiation glass and a little bit of everything. But I can't find what I'm looking for, we'll have to find that at another day. Well, anyway, oh, this is a fun find, that's a marble I found underneath an old brick. Ray Azale and I are debating, he's like, oh, it's not that old, I'm like, come on, Ray.
That's pretty dang old.
Yeah, that was underneath the brick. On a very old brick walkway, was underneath a very old brick walkway.
Then that, yeah, that's, that just looks old, I mean, come on now, that's, that's definitely old.
Yeah, so, um, and this is the thing and, um, and and then, of course, look at the the marble and the, these are radiation glass, that's radiation. Radioactive glass, but anyway, a lot of stuff there, I was looking, I have a button in here, I actually have a Revolutionary War button. But not here.
Oh, it's about here?
Back on the Watts property.
Oh, okay.
I looked it up and it's one of those, you know, those jackets that they wore that had the pewter buttons? Actually found one. And I found it, not with a metal detector, uh, walking along, saw stump flipped and it's sitting on the underside of a. And I found it, not with a metal detector, uh, walking along, saw stump flipped, and it's sitting on the underside of a flip.
Really, gosh, how, how long has it been sitting there, for hundreds of years?
So this is seven, you look at it and it's seventeen fifties-ish.
Yeah.
And this is in an area that there was no house anywhere at all, except it was part of an original grant in seventeen twenty, back to the Watts area.
Yeah.
So that was, so that area over there was one of the first gentlemen. Uh, what do they call the guys that are in the middle, they're not the, the high, high, but they're the middle.
Not the lords, but the.
Yeah, the mid.
Something.
Yeah, but anyway, he came from Stafford, so that family came out of Stafford, and if you go to Stafford, which was. Crystallizes a county, I think sixteen fifty-eight.
Yeah.
I believe I got that right, anyway, there was a lot of early migration from Stafford, because they were coming up the Potomac.
Okay, yeah.
So as opposed to coming up the Rapidan or Rappahannock, which was kinda leapfrogging, as they did plantation work along, where they were planting tobacco. But by uh crow's flight, coming from Acquahia and Stafford, you just walk, you almost go due west and you end up at the confluence of the rivers.
Yeah.
So, that being said, families that were coming from in the early seventeen hundreds. From, and of course, you know, um, uh, uh, Francis Taylor, he was born in Rappahannock in seventeen hundred. You start to wonder, um, what's missing.
Yeah.
So we'll dig into that.
There's a lot of pieces missing, and there's archaeology is just absolutely incredible.
Would like to see that in the school.
Yeah.
Now, do they have that, has anyone seen any cor- encouragement for that?
I personally haven't with my son, but you know, they got the archaeology program going on out there at Montpelier. When, when we were there, when I was there as a kid, we had none of this, we hadn't, we, they were trying to keep everything. Kind of as, as stable and as secure as possible, they didn't wanna mess with anything.
Yeah, don't act in haste repent and leisure.
Exactly, exactly, they were trying to be very, very careful with it, and we just didn't have access to that stuff, but now, we found out. Um, we, we've, we've discovered where the uh, where the slaves cemetery and the slave quarters were, uh, we found.
Were they on the hill by the other, where were the slave cemeteries?
It, so.
Slightly down from the main?
It was, yeah, so you got the, well, you have the main cemetery over here, and then if you, today, if you go there, if you walk across. And they have walking paths there and signs that'll, that that will direct you, but um, if you walk across, there's a little horse field here. And then you cross the street and then over here is.
Yeah, it kinda arcs down into a veil, a valley, or what, yeah.
And it's in the, it's in, it's in a very wooded area, and of course, it's.
Did they find, they found bones?
I, I, I'm not, I'm not sure about bones, but it was, but they found the pockets where the grapes were, yeah.
Grapes or grapes?
Grapes, like, like where they bury, is the cemetery.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, um, I mean, and then just how, you know, how they've done it with um, with uh bringing in the actual descendants of the people who were there.
Wow.
To tell the family stories, it's just absolutely incredible, but my son has never taken a field trip out there to see all this stuff. To see all this local history, and that's one of the things that I really wanna try to do, is this will allow our kids to appreciate. Our local, not just local history, but also local nature and sciences and things like what you're talking about with like. Uh, with uh, you know, with digging and finding out, you know, what's in, what's in.
You can't dig anywhere and not find some.
Yeah, absolutely, we were.
This was a wheel right here originally.
Oh, really?
Goes way back, and then you go down the road a little bit, it was Coopers who were cart rides.
Yeah, right, yeah.
So you have an original wheel, right, you have an original cart, right?
Yeah.
And this is the original Indian Path, twenty is the uh, is all rivers, all creeks that are north of twenty. Flow north.
Yeah.
South of twenty, go down to North Anna, so this is basically called the Dry Moccasin Path that comes up along, so.
Yeah.
Um, this is an old Native American path, this was the middle between Manapunai and Manahowas.
Wow.
So this was a shared hunting ground.
Yeah.
So, thought being is that, well, you could walk up and down this free, just don't go down into that land, this is kinda like the, the, the no man's land.
Yeah, this, we're gonna share this part.
Yeah, this is, this is where we can move back and forth, because if, in the old days, I think they uh, uh, when they would travel, if they had sticks and leather and dragging their stuff.
Sure.
Before horses came.
Yeah.
I'm not sure, Ray Azale will poke me in the eye on, on all my errors on that, but um, but my point being, sort of backing up. With uh, with uh Marquis Road and five twenty-two, these are two major uh, uh, major paths.
Yeah.
This goes all the way down to South Carolina.
Yeah.
That path down there, and of course, when the Cornwallis was it, that was coming up chasing uh, uh, Lafayette.
Yeah.
Uh, down to that church down there, down past Cat Harpen Down, and that way is where I think they had stopped, but he escaped up through here. And went over to uh, uh, Raccoon Ford, crossed over there and then came up uh toward Charlottesville on the other side, so. These are old paths.
These are very old paths, these are very ho- old, old places that, that our kids and parents too, frankly, could, could love to be a part in, and that's. That's another thing I would love to be able to do, is get parents involved.
Yeah.
Parent, it's imperative that parents be involved in their kids' education, I mean, I, I have studies that prove it, but you don't need studies to show that.
Yeah, it's common sense.
Yeah, it's common sense.
Well, this is nice, it sounds like you're gonna bring common sense moving forward and, you know, I have, you know, you've got a three-way, right, three or four?
Three, it's uh, me, Steve Keeler and Jack Rickett.
Jack Rickett, these three, three races are interesting, because it becomes a uh, a um, a numerical. Oddity, because you don't know where the unifying uh criteria of a majority voters.
Yeah.
And basically, everyone's running independent, is Steve Republican?
He, yes.
To be as a Republican, you're independent, and Rickert is, he's with Ellen Patera, I guess, they're compa- campaigning together.
They, they team up with, yeah.
Yeah, and uh, um, I know there's some funding brouhaha around that one, but I'm not gonna get into it, and may the best person win, woo-hoo. Anyway, thank you for your time, I appreciate it, next time we talk, I suppose we'll go into history.
I, I would love it.
Yeah, maybe, um, maybe, um, we'll, 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 uh, we'll get together once this whole election thing's done.
Yeah.
And uh, I know uh, Ben Boston wanted to sort of talk.
I would love to talk to him.
And Ben was a little under the weather the other day, so uh, he's like, come on, we gotta go.
And I don't wanna go around him being sick like this.
But you come around me, cause the Molly Patriot is strong as an ox.
I warned you, but you are correct, you are correct, Bull Moose guy right here.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it, and uh, thanks for tuning in, everyone, like and subscribe, uh, if you've got some ideas or comments. Um, I've got everything set, so you can't say anything mean, you'll get blocked and sent to uh Mars when Elon Musk first shiplet leaves off, so. Keep it this heap and simple, but anyway, thanks for tuning in, everyone, and uh, I, I hope you got a lot out of this, Molly Patriot. See ya. As I said, and uh, Napoleon beat out. Napoleon Dynamite.